My name is Matt Walsh. I'm with NextAmp. We're the solar company that's interested in developing these projects here that Jim just mentioned. This is a presentation that we made a couple of months ago, and I understand there's maybe a few new trustees since the election. So I'll run through some of the highlights of it again and bring everyone back up to date. Just briefly, a little bit about NextAmp. We were founded in 2007 by two Army veterans. Since 2007, we've grown quite a lot, and we've become a vertically integrated developer. So we-
Conherent?
...build communities, do projects approved. We build them, we own them, and we maintain them for the long term. So we're part of the- The entire lifecycle of the project. We're one of the largest community solar developers in the country at this point, and I'll go a little bit more into what community solar is relative to other types of solar in a second. We have 475 employees currently, and we have our headquarters in Chicago and in Boston. Last year, we announced with Governor Pritzker that Chicago would be our new headquarters, and we're committed to hiring about 2,000 new employees across the state and deploying $2 billion in capital. On this project and on many others, we've signed agreements to have our modules produced in the U.S. So we've signed some of the largest deals in the industry, securing module or solar panel supply from a factory in Clean, Minnesota, and in South Carolina. On the third page, just a little bit about NextAmp, we cover from Maine to Hawaii, basically every state that supports this kind of solar, we have a presence in. And Illinois has been one of our markets we focused on primarily. And then on the fourth page, just kind of giving an overview of NextAmp's capabilities. So like I mentioned, everything from development, construction, management, customer management, and long-term maintenance of the project. And then on the fourth page, I just wanted to give you a glimpse of what makes community solar different than other types of solar. So there's, on the larger scale, utility scale, which could be hundreds or thousands of acres that have millions of solar panels. And then on the other end of the spectrum, you have residential solar that people might put on their roofs or on their business that supplies their power needs for their actual onsite facility. What we've found is, through several studies, that over 50% of people can't get solar on their roof, whether it be because their roof can't support it, financially there's a barrier, or maybe they have trees or other reasons why solar can't go on the roof of their home. And we kind of fill that gap. So you can have one solar farm in a central location, people can subscribe to it and get the benefits of solar without actually having to have it on their property. So community solar is sometimes referred to as shared solar, and it's produced and put onto the distribution grid, so the power stays local. And with our program, it's free to sign up, there's no enrollment fees, there's no exit fees. Once you sign up, you become a subscriber to the project, and you are assigned a certain number of panels. The energy that's produced from those panels, you will get credit for that on your ComEd bill. So it thereby reduces your energy costs and helps support renewable energy. And I have my colleague Marion here who can go through-
I have a question first.
Sure.
How can residents subscribe?
So, once the project gets to construction is when we usually start marketing the project. We try to work with local communities that host our projects to get the word out, whether that be through a newsletter or other avenues that the village might have available to get the word out. Otherwise, we use a variety of different advertisements, whether it's on Facebook or mail or other ways that we get the word out to people. They are very popular, right? Because there's no reason not to sign up, and you save money. So they do fill relatively fast, but we try to target the local community first, and the folks that want to sign up, we take them on and enroll them, and not everybody chooses to sign up for it.
Is there a cost associated with the subscription?
There's no sign up or exit fees if you don't like our service, you don't have to pay anything to leave. But the energy that we're producing, it goes on your ComEd bill. So say, your solar panels that you were assigned produced $100 worth of energy, you get $100 discount on your ComEd bill. We would charge you $85 for that $100 credit. So effectively, you'd be saving $15 or 15% in that scenario. So there is a savings, and it's through a mechanism that we're basically giving you a credit, and then you pay us 85% of that value. Marion, if you want to go over the workforce development, and I will give the questions.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marion Jones. I am the Vice President of Workforce Development and DEI Justice for NextAmp. First and foremost, just want to say thank you for having us again, for giving us an opportunity to share information about this project. I actually just want to speak to this initiative from the workforce development angle. And when we talk about workforce development, my priority in my role is to figure out when we have these sort of projects that are coming into communities, to make sure that the residents and individuals that live in those communities, that are residents of those zip codes, that there are employment opportunities that exist for them. And if those employment opportunities don't exist, my job is to figure out how do we create those employment opportunities for them. So with NextAmp, I work on, you know, figuring out strategies for these pipeline-to-employment initiatives. So some of you may have individuals who you know who have gotten started in the industry that have maybe gone through a solar training program. So one of the things that we do, we partner with these FISA-funded and these state-funded community solar training programs, so that once those individuals graduate from those programs, we want them to come into our pipeline so that they're employed. So some of those organizations include the Chicago Urban Leagues, the local urban leagues, some of the organizations Amplify. We're also working with Foster Progress. We just created a partnership with them, and they focus on individuals who were in the foster care system and making sure that as they transition out, there are job opportunities for them. And our job is to make sure that they see a pathway for themselves in the renewable energy space. In addition to that, just last year, in April, we created a first-of-its-kind STEM-based renewable energy fellowship in partnership with City Colleges of Chicago. We started with one college, Olive Harvey, and within a 60-day timeframe, there was so, students were so receptive to that opportunity that we expanded that fellowship to all seven of the colleges under the City College umbrella. We have since gained some incredible support from organizations like Starbucks and Walmart who are saying, "How do we help you scale the initiative that you have with City Colleges to other colleges?" So we are in the process of speaking to other institutions of higher learning, like Governor State and UIC and places like that. And the goal is to, for those students who are in college to also, because I don't know if you all have nieces and nephews like my own, you know, we send them off to college, and you know, I check in with my niece, and I'm just like, "Are you lost? Are you staying on track with your learnings?" So sometimes there are students who are in college who really don't know, you know, what they want to be, and they're there because they know that education is important. And so for us, we're going into those institutions and saying, "Here's an opportunity for you to change the trajectory of your life and to create financial freedom within your own family legacy and in your community." And so through these initiatives, some of which you'll see on the document in front of you, we have those types of partnerships, the fellowship partnerships, that we want to continue to expand. One of the other requirements that we also have for subcontractors that are coming on board to work on any NextAmp projects is we require that they also hire individuals who live in these communities, so that, you know, there isn't this perception that subcontractors are coming in and bringing labor with them. We are very much in partnership with our labor unions in having discussions about potential agreements, so that we make sure that individuals who are going through these apprenticeship programs as well have jobs for us. In fact, we just recently, in November of last year, became one of the first solar companies to create our own in-house apprenticeship program, because we know the importance of those apprenticeship opportunities and how they lead to those high-income-earning opportunities. And so you'll just see some of the initiatives we've had over the past year or so, and those that we are looking to continue to expand upon. And, you know, we even are interested, you know, in going into the high schools and the middle schools. And as an example of that, just last year, we had a, I'm sorry, just last week, we had a ribbon-cutting event at a high school in the greater Chicago area where we partnered to build a STEM-based innovation lab in that school. So Uplift High School in Uptown, we were there last week with their administrators. We had a full-out dashboard where they will now be able to, let's say this project goes live, they can actually, from their classroom, hover over a dashboard map and see how many people are working on the projects, how many jobs it employs, the type of skill sets they need. So we know the importance of early education and early exposure and workforce development. That's just our commitment to make sure that equitable pipeline opportunities are in place for residents where these projects come to place.
One more.
Sure.
So you said you already started conversations with GSU, double state?
So I have not personally started conversations yet. I just hired a program manager who has started to initiate those conversations and get those meetings on our calendar. And so I know prior to, so the first line of order was, we wanted the partnerships with City College, City Colleges, and then Illinois State. So we've already started to engage Illinois State, and then Governor State University is the next priority. So those meetings are being set up as we speak. So, I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
So what I'm saying is, maybe that's for somebody else. So did you work at all with Governor State? Would you develop the plan? Maybe they might have some input in their neighbors. Maybe that's not for you.
Before you go, I have a question.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Just like she was just to kind of ask about the middle school, because I know you just said you hired a program manager. So I know the high school has a Bridges program for vocational training and learning, so I think that'd be a good opportunity to reach out to the Cremoni High School and look into their Bridges program.
And it's Cremoni High School?
Cremoni High School.
Okay, and they have a Bridges program?
Yes.
So that's great information to have. When I was at the ribbon-cutting event at Uplift High School, I connected with someone that sits on the board for CPS. So any of those sort of resources, you know, we're always looking to establish more connections in the community. Unfortunately, I'm relatively new to the state, so, you know, my one-year anniversary is next month. So, you know, doing as best as we can to, again, tap into some of those programs that are already in existence and collaborating. So thank you for sharing that. We are probably tag teaming. Do you want to step up just in case we-
So as far as developing the plan, we took into consideration all the neighbors and everything, but as far as like job opportunities and subscribers, like, you mean like subscribing to the project?
I think she said the design.
The design.
The design of it, and maybe the environmental stuff, you know?
We didn't engage Governor State University on the design of the project. Any other questions for Marion? Okay, great. Now we'll kind of dive into a little bit more of the plan. The next page is just the typical components. So as we go through the site plan, you'll see equipment pads are located at the center of the site. That's kind of the brains of the operation. Pollinators, which will be the ground cover that's planted underneath the solar array, and then of course, what the solar panels look like, and the fence that surrounds the solar array. And then we will have a couple of cameras on the site, be able to have eyes on the site to see what's going on at all times. And then the last piece is just to show you that the solar panels are mounted on steel racking that's driven into the ground. There's no concrete that's used to hold it in the ground. It's basically an I-beam that's driven in and held in by the pressure of the soil. I just put in a couple of projects in here to kind of give you a flavor of what it looks like. So the first one is a project in King County. This one has pollinators below it, similar to what we'll see on these projects here in University Park. And then here's one that's a little bit closer to home on Good Now Road in Beecher. This one had grass planted underneath it rather than pollinators at the request of the county. And then I have an area map just to kind of show you where the solar arrays are located generally within the community. So TNS Trailer Pool, they own over 300 acres here. These four projects will occupy approximately 100 acres of that. And then on the next page with the project information, I've highlighted in yellow what the purpose of this public meeting is for, is the annexation of the yellow parcel. So University Park has the other parcels already annexed in. The yellow parcel, you can see in the lower left-hand corner, one of the solar arrays goes into that parcel, and we're requesting that University Park take jurisdiction of that parcel. It's currently in county jurisdiction right now. And then next page is just a little bit more detail on the site plan, so you can kind of see the solar is condensed to the center of the site to stay away from neighbors as much as possible. I've put a table on here that kind of shows the setback to the nearest neighboring parcels. You can see that on the bottom box, we're able to keep the nearest solar panel over 1,200 feet away from the nearest residential house. In comparison, Will County's code allows solar panels to be as close as 150 feet to a neighboring home. So we've almost 10x that distance. And then just a little bit about what we've completed so far. So we have a lease with the landowner, we've completed our surveys, our utility studies with ComEd, we've gotten our sign up from the State Historic Preservation Office, endangered species is complete, wetland delineation has been finalized and reviewed by Army Corps of Engineers, drain tile investigation, the initial results are completed, we'll have further studies to do there. We've done geotechnical testing on the soils to ensure that they can host these solar panels, and then we are currently working on approval from VP, who has a pipeline to the middle of the site. So we've been doing some survey work with VP over the last week. And then the next page for the community benefits piece, obviously there's the environmental benefits of a solar project. This is a temporary use, so after the lease is over, the property can be returned to farmland. We've signed an agreement with the Illinois Department of Agriculture that requires us to take a lot of steps to make sure that the property can be returned back to farmland if not used for some other commercial use. Obviously, we already talked about the utility savings. This would save costs for the equivalent of about 4,000 homes. And the table on the bottom shows the tax increases, really without us putting any additional pressure on public resources, right? So we're not sending kids to schools, we're not using the libraries or the parks, or besides during the construction period, really, the roads. But in comparison, this 100-plus acres that we're using generates about $5,500 in tax revenue per year in comparison to $240-some-thousand dollars a year that these projects will generate. So over the course of a 40-year period, the property as it is now would generate about $400,000 in tax revenue compared to about $6.5 million that will be generated with the solar on this 100-plus acre portion of the property. And then the last piece I just wanted to touch on, and we can take some more questions, is the decommissioning. So we take a lot of effort to make sure that we use as little concrete as possible, we don't disturb the soils more than we need to, and we return the property back to farmland. So in addition to taking a lot of steps to protect the property, we also will be putting up a bond with the Village of University Park that puts our money at risk, that we need to remove this at the end of its life, otherwise University Park has the money available to remove it. So there are financial obligations that we're making to make sure that the property is taken care of, complies with the codes, and is operated within the bounds of the rules here. And that's the end of my presentation, but happy to take any additional questions. Trustee?
Yes, I just wanted to know, will there be a lot of trucks coming through our parkway?
During construction, we usually see, for a project of this size or projects, probably about four to five deliveries a day for about three months, four months. And after that, there's a handful of site visits a year where we do lawn mowing and any equipment repairs or anything that needs to be done. So outside of that initial construction period, there's maybe a dozen or two dozen visits, like in a pickup truck, per year. Anything else? Go ahead.
One more. Just based off of the federal government now, has this project been affected in any way by the changes?
Yes and no. Yes in the fact that we now have an expedited schedule. You know, the bill is basically dismantling a lot of parts of the government, including solar. But there is a window that, you know, still has to go through Congress, has to be signed by the president, so there could be additional changes. But we would have to basically order all of our equipment for the projects 60 days after the president signs the bill into law. So we are under a tight timeline. We can't order any equipment until we have approvals from the village, but it's certainly going to be a big impact to the solar industry in general. But this project itself shouldn't be impacted, since we're pretty far along with it already. But I think one good thing about NextAmp is we are very well-capitalized. It'll probably slow things down for us, which is unfortunate, but we will still be developing projects. Solar is a movement that cannot be stopped, regardless of what the federal government says. We will continue to develop projects, but they will probably be fewer and farther between, unfortunately.
All right, does that conclude the questions? All right, Matt, thank you so much. Any public comments? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion for a adjournment from the public hearing. Moved by Lewis. Second by Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lewis?
Present.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
Trustee Jenkins? Trustee Foucher?
Present.
Trustee Thompson? Trustee Brooks? Mayor Rudaz?
I'm here. Let us please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice for all. All right, is there a motion for an approval of the minutes? Moved by Lewis?
Second.
Oh, we don't have any.
We don't have any minutes, sir.
Thank you so much, sir. No?
No minutes, sir.
No minutes, so you're going to ask for a motion to table then? Somebody has to make a motion. So you're making a motion to table, second by Thompson. All in favor of the table, we don't have minutes? Roll call, Madam Per.
Trustee Lewis?
Both aye.
Trustee Williams?
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both aye.
Trustee Foucher?
Both aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Mayor Rudaz?
Both aye. Madam Per, are there any general public comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, I have a motion, is there any, the board members, are there, is there anything on the consent agenda? Pardon me? Yes, there are two public comments. There's one to address specific items on the agenda, and one just at the end, just for general public comments.
Okay. Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll take you off for the others, okay? Thank you. Come on.
Hello, board. Okay, I'm trying to get my, we're here on the agenda here. I see that there's a motion to appoint Ms. Karen Lewis to serve as the mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem. I hope that that's not passed for a simple reason, nothing against you, trustee, but in the past, I think it's a slap in the senior trustee's face, trustee Theo Brooks, to be the senior trustee here and not be appointed to be the acting. Before, I remember, we used to have a deputy mayor a long time ago, and I guess that's thrown out the window, I don't know what happened to that, but I think that that's a shame. Here, appointing Mr. Todd Hall to the Education Advisory Committee, I have a question about that, seeing that he's been sitting on the board of 201U for years, and not yet have I seen him come here and tell us anything that's going on with 201U, and seeing that he was one of the ones that asked that the children be removed from the school, which was the same in the face of God. And I was wondering, has anyone else ever asked to be on the finance committee? Because actually, you can be. You don't have a boss. You guys are individually elected by the people. So whatever you choose to be on, you should be on. I don't understand how this thing is working. And to remove, and to say that, to take the authority away from the board to choose a committee, so you guys aren't qualified to choose, you don't have a boss. You all are all, remember that, you all are all elected officials. You do not have a ruler. You have a voice. We put you there. You have a voice. You speak it, please. Also here, Education Advisory Committee activating that, I don't know where the other committees are not here. I have asked to be on committees. It was unanimously voted on, but however, it never made the agenda. This board nominated me to be on two commissions and one committee, and it never came to the board. It never came to the appointment, never came to the agenda, shall I say. Came to the board and then come to the agenda. Why that? Looked like we got a Trump in this village. It's bothering some to me. And people at University Park, you need to come up and speak up. We need to stop this. That is a disgrace to you, trustee, and I apologize for the way you're being treated. I know the feeling. So I hope that you're really thinking about these items that's on the agenda and speak with your heart. with your heart. I had a scripture that I wanted to read, but it will only fall on deaf ears. And God hears my prayers. Thank you.
Comments? Are there any other questions regarding agen, agenda items? If not, is there any? Oh.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. It looks like everybody had a safe, happy Memorial's Day. Good evening, everybody. Looks like everybody had a safe, happy Memorial's Day. That's a blessing. Um, regarding the, um, I'm sorry, I can't even read my own writing. F C. Regarding the, uh, new business portion of the agenda, in reference to the, uh, Educational Advisory Committee, not taking anything from anybody being appointed, my question, I know Donna Detbarn has devoted a lot of time, energy, and effort to this committee. Will there possibly be a reappointment of her as chair?
There's a possibility, absolutely.
And earlier today, I spoke to Ms. Hampton at Village Hall because I was having problems trying to reach Kim Sanders. I don't know if I, there's a new phone number. I just wanted to check with her in regards to the applications that I had turned in for, um, being appointed to any committees. Is there a new number to reach her by? Or how do I get in touch with her?
I would suggest email.
Email?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. Aiman Nickerson. Since you might as well, you're gonna do it this way, you can never move more comments.
Good evening, everyone.
So, so wait a minute, Mr. Nickerson, I gotta be fair. Are your comments regarding anything on this agenda right now?
Oh, no.
So we'll, we'll save you guys for then. Thank, thank you so much for your understanding. All right. If that's it, anybody who's speaking about the agenda, is there anything the board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Trustee, yes?
F one B. F one B and the S line.
Oh, that's all. Oh, I'm, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Board. Um, as a person who may not know as much as many of these other people who've been on the Board concerning the process, um, that takes place when you're getting ready to put people on committees, um, I still have just common sense questions. Um, I found out that I was actually on the agenda through residents. Starting out that way, it's kind of like, uh, I don't even know what to say about that because I thought maybe someone would notify me. However, I wasn't. Maybe some other people that are here that were also put on committees, maybe they were notified and I wasn't. I don't know. But the process to me seemed like it faltered right there. Secondly, I guess I'm just concerned again about, um, people already on the Board, the school Board, also being on this committee. I need to understand the purpose in that. I know when it comes to time to vote, whether it's with the committee or whether it's with the school Board, there can be a conflict. It can be an issue. Just bringing that to your attention. So that's really all I really want to say about it. Thank you.
So, um, F one B? Can you all hear me? Can't hear me? How about now? Okay, there you go. So, um, first, second, and third readings and ordinance repealing appointments to commissions and committees by the Board of Trustees and restoring appointment authority to the mayor. Um, I want to make a motion to remove this. Um, it was not on the consent agenda from the Cal, and we already voted. We already voted, um, five to two on four twenty-two, twenty-five, and we did not agree with this. The Board did not agree.
For, just for the record, it really does not have to go on the consent agenda as it did, uh, let me look at this. When you guys decided to do this and make this motion and overthrow the mayor and just take the trustee Theo Brooks, trustee Donna Foucher, trustee Ju, uh, Ju, Ju Thompson, dated May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, so it did not require to go to the Cal. So then, it does not require to go to the Cal now, and it's requiring a vote from the majority, and we'll move forward with it. So if you have a motion on the floor, though, you have to get a second to have it removed, and then we'll go through the process as needed.
May I add to that, Mayor?
Yeah, oh yeah, okay, it's moving from the consent, yeah, yeah.
Right, so it's, it's not, it wasn't?
It's, it's considered separately.
No, because we voted on, um, April twenty-second to keep it the way it is. We've already voted. So, um, so how many times can something keep coming up if the mayor doesn't like it? How many times is that? Really? Okay. How do you cut this on? Sorry, when it's on. Mayor, may I be recognized, please?
Yes, trustee. Miss, miss, you're not gonna yell out in these meetings anymore, it's gonna be unacceptable.
The, the answer to the question was that, uh, the mayor, uh, any item can be brought up, uh, at repeated meetings. It just goes to a vote. It, it can be brought up multiple times. The topics such as, uh, item F one B or, or any items, just because it fails on the agenda, uh, fails to get a, uh, affirmative vote on the agenda does not mean it cannot be brought back up at a future date.
All right. Trustee Jenkins?
Uh, yeah. This happened when I was elected on the first. This was something that I didn't have the opportunity to speak on, and I think that as a, for us to work collaboratively together, we need to make sure that this be tabled so it can go to a workshop and we can amend some things because it's some ideas that I can add to this that may make it where we all want to do this. And so I didn't have the opportunity to do so, and so I want to move to table this so we can have further discussion about this. So Mayor, it's totally not off the table, but what we need to do is we need to, to work out something that is-
Trustee, you want to make a motion to make a table?
Yes, a motion to table.
Is there a second?
No, I made a motion to remove it.
Okay. Well- But there was no second to that motion yet, and then a mo-
It's because the mayor started talking.
I, I know, but then if there's a motion to table, that always takes precedence over any motion. So if there's a motion-
Motion to table.
Motion to table, if there's a second-
Is there a second?
No, so-
Second by trustee Lewis?
So, so nobody got a chance to second because the mayor started talking over me. So, so can we ask the question again?
But, but even if there was a second, if there's a motion to table, that takes precedence.
Okay.
So there's a motion to table by trustee Jenkins and a second by trustee Lewis? Roll call, Madam Clerk? And this is to table?
Trustee Lewis?
Both aye.
Trustee Williams?
Both, both aye to table.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both aye to table.
Trustee Foucher?
Just to table it, yeah. If, if the motion to table fails, then you go back to the original motion.
Both no.
Trustee Thompson?
Both no.
Trustee Brooks?
Both no.
Mayor Rudez?
And what do we got, what's the vote there, Madam Clerk? Votes aye to table.
Thank you. Motion to table has passed.
Also.
All right. Is there anything else?
Yes. F one C.
Item F one C, yes?
For further discussion.
Okay, so what are you asking for?
I am asking-
To remove that separately.
To remove that separately.
Okay.
Okay. No, 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 no. I'm sorry. No, that's to stay, I mean F one, let me put my gla, F, I don't have my glasses. F one D.
Okay, F one D. Is, is, there's a motion, is there a second?
What is the motion?
To table item F one D, a motion authorizing summer events and schedule. It's a motion by trustee Jenkins, Bill?
Yes.
And second by trustee Lewis.
We can have, um-
It's just table for a workshop.
But I, I have a, um, question. I don't understand, I understand the motion, sorry, we get to discuss. So with the motion to table for a workshop, these are summer events that's about to happen very soon. So I don't understand why we wanting to, I understand, you're just getting in, well, you were here when I was presenting it, but we moved to move it forward because these are events that's about to happen. A workshop, summer will be over with by the time we get done with the workshop. We also want to make sure this information gets out into the newsletter so the residents can have time to plan and have these different events. So I don't understand why we are moving to have events to do for the summer to be workshopped when there's no other, all the other events that we have here in the community is never workshopped. It's never even discussed. Matter of fact, they're not even brought to the Board, so the Board to approve them. So to, to act to table events that was presented, I'm confused on why we're tabling them and then nothing else ever gets tabled, nor I have a workshop, nor it has the further discussion.
Mayor, may I be recognized, please?
Trustee.
The reason why I'm looking to table this is we had a resident in a, in the, in the last meeting that said that she would like to be a part of this, and I feel that it's only right to respect our constituents, and it's not fair for us to decide what we want our children to do over the summer. Now, I went to the Memorial Day celebration for, uh, the veterans this weekend, and we had a, a young lady that came from Governor's State, and she spoke about all of the free programs that existed for the children at Governor's State. We have the val, we also have the library that has programming for the children for the summer, and we also, I have programming for the children that's free as well. And my thing is, is that we can work collaboratively together when we have a workshop, and maybe the village can offset some of the costs with just only providing transportation to these different events, and I don't feel that it needs to be rushed. Now, when I say let this be clear, we know that the children get out of school in June every year. This should have been done in January, and we would have had a clear understanding on what direction we were going. So I feel that when you rush things, my grandmother said haste waits and makes waste. It hasn't been marketed. You know, our, our villages, you know, it, we're not the most energetic people to get involved and, and, and join things and come to different events. So we need time to market this. And when the workshop, I'm not saying that the workshop is gonna take a month, but what I'm saying is, is the workshop needs to take place because you don't know what other resources the residents may have in the community that want to join us because that's what they want to do, and they, you know, their voices need to be heard. We need to always put the people first. And her name is Patricia Cooper that came and spoke at the last meeting in reference to, you know, the money and all of that from Thornwood House. So we want to make sure that everything is done and done accordingly, and as well as we need to make sure we have volunteerism, we need to make sure that everything goes according to plan. Thank you. May I be recognized?
Trustee Jen.
Okay, I want to say I do appreciate, um, trustee Foucher because this is something that we do need in our community. My biggest concern is safety. Do we have the volunteers and they, they've been vetted and background checked before we begin this program? That's, that's my biggest concern, is the well-being of our children and making sure that they're in good hands. That's what I'm concerned about.
I, I can respond. Uh, first, I'd like to respond to trustee Jenkins. As for the resident that was, Ms. Patricia, that was in the audience, as I stated during the Cal meeting, everybody have an opportunity to bring suggestions on what they want to have or what they want to suggest here in University Park. The couple, I, the items that I have that was presented does not take up the entire summer. For instance, several of the days, it's just three hours a day that something is actually happening. You have the rest of the days, they have the rest of the time, the rest of the days to present anything that people want to do. As matter of fact, based off of the calendar, there's several days that nothing is happening. So I, as I stated then, the residents, the trustees, I put it out there for everybody, bring your ideas, come and contribute to see what are some of the things that you want to hear, have here in your community during the summer for your youth. That was an open invitation to everybody, and it's still an open invitation to everybody. Like I said, there's multiple times, days that are available. All you do is got to bring your information. As for the safety, uh, I was working with the executive liaison to update the, to update the application for committees and commissions, and that was one of the things that we had on the form, that we want to make sure that any committee or commission that deals with children should have background checks. Now, that, that applies with the, the most. I'm not sure if they, all of them have the background checks, but that applies to them as well who works with the children. So when we're doing this, it don't, that singling out is not good because that's exactly what's happening. And, and, and so for, as for the process, I was working on the process with getting the committees and commissions out and going. I'm talking to a lot of the residents, they say we need volunteers, they're coming in and signing their applications, and that's the thing that we need to do is make sure we get these committees filled with the residents that want to participate. So yes, we want to make sure that their safety and everything is together. I tried to meet with the village manager to go over this information, but she didn't want to speak on it. So yes, we need to have this information. I want to make sure that those that are working with the youth have background checks, and that was one of the things I wanted to add and present to the Board, the entire Board, so they could review the application as well to give their input. That was the process that was being worked on, make some adjustments, make sure that we're covering each other because me as on the baseball, as baseball board and organization, we make sure every last one of our coaches are background checked because they're dealing with kids. So I understand the, the safety and importance of all of that. That's exactly what I want for every organization, every committee and commission that's here at University Park. So that applies to everybody, and I, and I know that's just, to my understanding, that's not happening at right now. So yes, we need a process in place, but then you have to make sure that it applies to everybody. So this again, will take time, is open, a welcome invitation to every resident, to every trustee, whoever, workers, if y'all have ideas to bring different things to University Park for our children, for our youth, for our, for just residents in general, please bring it. This was done because there has not, has not been anything presented for our youth during the summer in years. And as the resp, as the response to the presentation that was done at the memorial service, yes, the Governor's State did come and talk about it, but it was only for veterans and their families. It's now open to everybody to attend, it's for veterans and the veteran's family. I'm not a veteran, so I would not be able to attend over there at Governor's State. She said the veterans, veterans and veterans' families, because it's the Veterans Resource, um, Organization.
Uh, trustee Foucher, um, I do recall her not saying it was just for the veterans and the veteran's family. She did open it up and tell us all to come. She did say that. So maybe it's a little bit of, you know, cause she didn't just say no, but she didn't say yes, it's just for the veterans as well, but she did encourage the community to come.
May I be recognized?
Trustee.
Okay, I did bring programs and information to trustee Foucher. I have mentioned it before several times live in this Board meeting- I have mentioned it before several times live in this board meeting. I have two other people in the audience tonight. Maya Hightower, Aiman Nickerson, who are wanting to bring life lesson programs to our youth to teach them how to open bank accounts, checking accounts, 401Ks, how to market their business. If they're not going to college, they can become an entrepreneur. They're teaching them, excuse me, they're teaching them things that they need to know. So I am bringing them tonight to present and to explain the programs that they too would like to offer. So yes, I am bringing programs. I had no idea that at the time I was doing this with them, which was back in November, that even Foulter was even gonna bring these programs. No farther hurt. But I was back there then in November, meeting with them and met with them more recent. In fact, I attended the scholarship program that they gave at Crete Moni High School, giving out twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarships and two free rides, full rides, to two of the seniors who are going to UIC to become doctors. So, information was presented, and I will continue to do that. I have nothing against people bringing programs. All I want to do is make sure we're following the proper protocol and that we're not trying to rush something through, through, that we get adequate time to look at it and to discuss it and make sure it fits the bill. Thank you.
One more response. Um, I believe it was during the February or March board meeting when I had my, um, comments, I said that I was in the process of, I met with the village. I was in the process of working on bringing some activities and summer events to University Park. I reached out and said, if anybody, board members, trustees, and residents, if you have any ideas, please reach out to me and let me know. So this was already talked about, I believe it's in February or March. And then I also met with the village manager, which I stated, I met with the village manager to talk, to go over these things. And we had conversations about some of the things that we want to do. And she had some things that she was already working on that she wanted to bring to during the summertime as well. So, it was pre-information back then saying, residents and trustees, please reach out. Let me know. This is what I want to do because we do not have things in the, the community for our youth. I hear it. I have young children. I have a fifteen, thirteen, eleven, and nine-year-old. And my children talk, ask me all the time, why don't we have anything here to do in University Park during the summertime? I hear this constantly. And y'all know that I deal with, I work with the kids all the time. I'm always getting other kids and taking them places throughout other communities. But I want to make sure I take them to places within here at University Park and they have an opportunity. Thank you.
All right.
I agree with you. I just think it's sad that for years, we had a parks and rec that was a rec. Because the person in charge let it fall to the ground. And that dilapidated barn and having kids run around in a day camp, running through grass and weeds, was not a day camp. And too many of you all were not here. You were sitting at home and not saying a word. And that's what was offered to our children for years. And Mayor Covington knows how many times I stood at that mic. Am I right about it? And no one said a word. But now, we all want to try and gather together and create something, which I don't have a problem with. I think we should. But I'm just saying, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? And it went straight to the dogs. And they walked them animals out with half fur on them. It was pitiful. So now we're trying to gather ourselves and bring back programs, which I don't have a program, a problem with. I know every year, for the last two years, we've had job programs for the young people. It's unfortunate for sixteen and above because the other childrens don't have the proper work permits. But yes, we do need to have something for our children. And we need to hopefully do things like what Jenkins was saying. Sometimes a workshop is needed. Sometimes we do need to hear from the residents to see just what they want and what we can put together so our summers can be successful for our youth. That's all I'm saying.
So, is that, is that it? Hit the mics up here. All right. So there's a motion and a second to, um,
Table.
Considered, to table or to have it considered separately? Table?
Table.
Table. And is this a second? Roll call, madam clerk. This is to table, item F one D, to a workshop.
Yes, trustee Lewis?
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams?
Pass at this time.
Trustee Jenkins?
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulter?
Vote no.
Trustee Thompson?
No.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote no.
Mayor Rudes?
Votes yes to table. You have to go back to trustee Williams now.
Trustee Williams?
I would like to know how long before we do the workshop because time is of the essence.
True, sure.
When's the first meeting? I said, I would like to know when we can workshop it because time is of the essence.
Yeah, we have a meeting, answer.
Let's do it.
We'll do a workshop before the Cal?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then. If we can workshop it immediately, then I will go ahead and vote the table at this.
Um, how we work, how y'all getting this information out to the
Thank you.
Community that you're gonna workshop it? So that's like next week? Yes, I have that. The table passed.
The same way we're getting the programs out, we will let people know at different locations, we'll put, I mean, it's always a way to do something if you want it done. Let's not make up excuses. We can get the word out, next door, Facebook, um, at your baseball games, at the village manager, uh, at the village hall rather. We need to, to do it immediately.
All right. Thank you. So, we have items F one A and items F one C left on the consent agenda.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call. These, these are the vote on items F one A and F one C on the consent agenda. There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis?
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams?
Vote aye.
Trustee Jenkins?
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulter?
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
And Mayor Rudes?
Vote aye. Thank you so much. We'll go down to, um, new business, item F two A, motion authorizing immediate effective dismissal of Montana and Welch LLC as legislative council. Is there a motion?
So mo.
Moved by Lewis? Is, is there a second?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Um...
We gotta make, we gotta get a second then, then the question.
Okay.
Is there a second? Motion by trustee Lewis was to authorize the immediate effective dismissal of Montana and Welch LLC as legislative council. There's a motion. Is there a second? If, if not, if, if else. Next item, resolution of condolence to celebrating the life of Ms., the life of Ms. Wilma J. Jones. Is there a motion?
She asked to table. I think Drew asked. No, oh, you was, okay.
Moved by Brooke. This is the resolution for, um...
Oh, okay.
Uh, do this. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Lewis?
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams?
Vote aye.
Trustee Jenkins?
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulter?
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudes?
I have votes aye.
Okay, the motion passed.
So these items F two C and F two D, ask for motion to table those, because they're gonna be going to a workshop? Or this m, motion authorizing the activation of the educational advisory committee?
These are new.
Huh? I know, these, these are new motions. So is, is there a motion?
So two and D?
Two and D.
So, why?
Well, no, no, we can take the vote on it. We can take the vote on it. Well, because I thought if they wanted to discuss about the appointing authority, then that's when it all would come out during a, a workshop. So, that's why I asked us there a motion to table.
F two, eh, F two B.
That's, that's why. Talk to me, board.
Uh, so I move to table F two C and F two D.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a second?
So mo.
Moved by Williams. Roll call, madam clerk.
For C and D, trustee Thompson?
Well, that'd also have to go with item F two F as well. So would you like to amend that motion? All right. I mean, if you're gonna do the same thing, okay. All right, we'll do that separate.
Okay, so we'll do C. C and D.
Mm-hmm.
We are taking a roll call for both of those now. Okay, trustee Lewis?
We're doing two C and two D together, okay?
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams?
Yep.
Yes. Trustee Jenkins? Trustee Foulter?
Vote no.
Trustee Thompson? Trustee Brooks?
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudes?
Vote aye to table.
Thank you.
All right.
So C and D have passed. We need to do E.
All right. Item F two eight, motion authorizing the appointment of trustee Karen Lewis to serve as mayor pro temp and absolute mayor. Is there a motion?
So mo.
Moved by Lewis? Second by Jenkins?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Question or discussion? And trustee Lewis, this is nothing against you. The question I do have for the chair is that after each election, so this will be year number nine for me that I'm sitting on. Prior to this, I sat on two commissions. Sat as vice chair on a commission and chair of the mall. When you went to Vegas, and I noticed you mentioned it earlier in reference to item F one B, there was no overthrow of the mayor. What we had was a situation where board members are asking for checks and balances up here. And I felt as a senior trustee and trustees who put their signatures on there, we gave them the opportunity to voice and implement something that will put a balance to the board. In fact, let's be honest, Mr. Mayor, you were furious in Las Vegas. Felicia Frazier was the attorney at the time, and I sat back in the same chair and told Felicia Frazier, tell the mayor, even when it came to attorneys, we can work this out. Nobody's trying to overthrow his seat. Now, yes, Mayor, I did run in twenty-twenty-three, but it has not stopped the professionalism that I maintain. At least twice, you came in late from refereeing. I sat right in that chair. Nothing was gonna change and nothing was gonna be manipulated. So if it's tomorrow that you are absent, I am solely more than qualified to sit in that chair in chair of meeting that you're not available at. Now, we done had our differences. And actually, I didn't even know the camera popped on because some of the things that people seen, they shouldn't have seen. But at the end of the day, I've always shown respect to the chair. And so what I'm saying to you is, Mr. Mayor, show me the respect that when you are not here, I can be mayor pro temp and carry out what you ask. It ain't gotta be whatever you want, maybe some major deal. But I'm sure every trustee on this board know that I can do it. Because I'm about to flip the script a little bit. Let's say you're not in that chair and I'm the mayor. Trustee Lewis would be the senior trustee. And I would not have a problem letting her chair one of my meetings. So I think respect is due where it's at. Because when the Aqua situation did happen, I'm gonna tell you where I felt that little knock at. I didn't have no problem turning anything over to trustee Lewis because that was your preference. But I was in on that well two years. I just felt that when the time came, even though I ran and trustee Williams was on my ticket, trustee Williams, I knew she would be qualified to sit up there. Her and I had plenty conversations. But once again, you didn't take the same measures of putting me and trustee Lewis together to have that tag team. I feel like I'm always on the outs. And I'm just saying, Mr. Mayor, out of respect, I never disrespect you in that chair. I just ask that you did, show me the respect as your senior trustee. Don't talk about that we can't have a coffee and a beer and all that because I think we passed that point. But what we can do is be professionals. And I tell you, I have been on the job for a police officer more than seven years that that mailing went out. And one thing is for sure, when two police officers can't get along, but this is what they do, they pair us up. When it ain't working, the divorce is silent. We have an understanding that we sit in that squad car together and we protect ourselves and our citizens. Am I right, Chief Mitchell? You don't have to answer because I want you to keep your job. But I want to say that that should be the same working relationship I asked for you. Is that when you're not here, I'm able to chair whatever you ask. And you can pick up the phone just like I can pick up the phone if it gets to that serious. We did it together with that Aqua water situation. Trust me, I'm not looking for brownie points for no election. But when you was on that line, I give you credit for when you hung up the phone because we worked together, you, me, and Ms. E. And I just ask that maybe sometime we have to go back to that relationship to understand and that when it comes together as a board, we can do it. Now, it's the board's choice and it's your choice because I read the ordinance. But I'm just letting you know for me, please don't kick at me no more because I'm not kicking at you. I yield my time.
Trustee, points well taken. And let me just, just speak, since we want to go back and turn back the hands of time. As a, as a trustee, I remember sitting on the board. And, uh, I was a senior trustee. And the ordinance came up to do the same thing. And actually, Mayor Covington made Larry Brown her mayor pro temp. There was no such thing. I won't, I won't dispute with ignites. But, so, so anyway, that was her preference. It doesn't make a cho, and this is my preference as it is now. I'm gonna, I'm supporting the person that I know works with me, uh, knows the direction that we're going in. And it's not about how long a person's been there, it's what they've actually done while they're sitting there. That's what's really important. You can sit there a long, long time, but there's not a piece of legislation that you can clam on to or anything. Not talking about you in particular. So I chose trustee Karen Lewis. It's a good look for the community. She's intact, in tune with the direction of the community. She's met with folks with me, so she understands. And this is no offense to you. And anybody who makes an offense to you, that's just on them. But that's my preference, that's my choice. But that's my preference, that's my choice, that's my story, I'm sticking to it. Let the vote make the, that the board.
Can I respond to that, dog?
Let the, let the board, let, let the board, let the board make their decision. Let the board make their decision.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I agree, but let me, let me also say this.
I've, I've, I've worked with you. And you know, with the Aqua water, I was really frustrated with you and Covington at one time, because you and Covington are the ones who bought in this, to take, well, not you, because you weren't the leader of the community.
Yeah, please, please, please.
You supported the efforts of bringing in the contaminated water from the Cankey River. We were all opposed to that. There were no public hearings talking about the Cankey River. There was none of these things, there was an, there was an advisory committee that was formed that had no experience in water, science, lead, or anything. As anyone knows, scientists all around the world know that the Cankey River is the dirtiest, nastiest source of water for drinking. The only way that Cankey survives is because their filtration plant is right off of the river. But to transfer that and bring it into our community, flip the script and say it's something that I didn't do or it wasn't about Aqua, that's, that's not true, dog. That's, that's not the way I looked at it. I felt like we did it injustice. And all the residents say, well, you're not doing this, you're not doing this about the water. But if you wanna start talking about the water, talk about where it really started at. It didn't start with you, cause you wasn't the mayor. It didn't start with me, I wasn't even in public office. But it started with me thirty days after I took public office. And we've been fighting.
It started with us. It started, it didn't start with you, it started with us.
Yeah, so, so, but we gonna, we gonna move on past that.
But, yeah, it started with us, and let me say this. I don't think it's fair for you to sit here, and we just came out of election on April first. The people spoke. I was last on the ballot, but I came in first. So before you start saying that I'm not in touch with the community?
I didn't say the community, sir.
You did?
I didn't say the community. I didn't say the community. But we not gonna go back, we not gonna go back and disappoint. Matter of fact,
I yield my time.
I'm just gonna call for a vote. There's a mo- a motion and a second. This is to have motion authorizing the appointment of trustee Karen Lewis to serve as mayor pro temp and the absolute mayor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Williams? Pass. You abstaining?
She passed, that means it comes back around.
Trustee Jenkins?
Vote aye.
Trustee Foucher?
Abstain.
Trustee Thompson? Trustee Brooks? Mayor Rudes?
It goes back to trustee Williams first.
Trustee Williams?
I vote to give it to Brooks.
I'm sorry? So trustee, you have to say, you have to say vote. But that's not the question. She has to say yes or no.
Oh, right, yes and no.
She voted aye.
Trustee Williams? Trust- Trustee Williams, I just need to clarify your vote. Yes, because this, this has nothing to do with trustee Brooks, with him having any authority. So you're just saying yea or nay to trustee Lewis for this?
At this time, no.
No, okay, thank you. Mayor Rudes?
Vote yes.
Okay, so the motion did not pass.
Didn't pass?
No, sir.
What, what happened?
Because we have abstained from trustee Foucher.
So that's a no vote, that goes with the majority, so you got one, two, three?
No, abstain is a no, sir. I'm sorry, abstain is a no.
It says abstain goes with the majority.
And they're tied, and so it's no. It's three to three.
Okay. All right.
The motion did not pass.
Three to three. Let me see the, let me see the bills payable.
We not on that yet.
Yeah.
We, we didn't do that.
Okay, I, last item. Item two F, motion authorizing the appointment of so- of trustee Sonia Jenkins as the trustee liaison to the finance committee. Is there a motion? Moved by Lewis?
Second.
Second by Williams?
Question.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Jenkins, this is not towards you.
Okay.
Can't hear me? Okay. So trustee liaison assignments have been made for some trustees, but not for some others, including me, trustee Foucher, and trustee Brooks. When I volunteered to be the liaison for the veterans committee, Mr. Robinson was allowed to approach the podium and attempt, cause it's not that easy, to demean me in public with no advocacy or call for order from the mayor, from the mayor. No call for decorum or anything. Apparently, nothing against you trustee Williams, I was replaced by trustee Williams with no discussion. On Saturday at the veterans memorial service, which was very nice, I saw people with U P veterans committee shirts who did not become before the board for approval. I'm not even sure all of them live in U P, cause no volunteer, volunteer applications were submitted for review. So Mayor, how is it that some trustees can get information and be appointed to committees which we all wanna, we are public servants? I'm not finished, I'm not finished. And then some of us cannot. We can't do anything. We can't get information. We can't, we can't serve to our fullest capacity. Do you really think that's fair?
Trustee Thompson, are you finished?
No, then I'm not finished, I'm not finished.
I wanna respond, that's what I'm asking.
I feel that you, you owe me an apology for allowing some, a resident to come to the podium and talk in reference to me in that fashion and my trying to serve on the veterans committee. So if, if, if everybody else can have a committee, how come the three of us can't have a committee?
Well, you know what?
That we choose to work.
I can speak individually. You've nev- they've never asked. Donna, what did you ask me to be trustee liaison to?
When I first got here, I asked you to be the liaison for the economic development committee. And I asked multiple times.
Okay, I don't remember that, but okay.
And, and, but, and so I, it never happened. And even though, you know, like I said, just wondering exactly when it was gonna happen.
We can revisit that, okay. You know what, see, when we don't communicate, a lot of those, a lot of those things slip through the gap, man, you don't really have no problem with communication.
Yeah, we, I do, I communicate, I call, I, I, I've met, I came to the office and even asked about it.
That's fine, we can revisit that.
Okay.
So, so trustee Thompson, after the veterans committee, you've never asked, you've never said anything else about it. I have no problem. So I don't want the people to be out here painting it like I'm doing something so, so bad and I'm denying this, that, and another. Trustee Brooks, have we ever had a conversation about liaison on anything?
When you first came in, I said I wanted to be in the finance.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Speak into the mic. Speak into the mic.
I did, when I first came in.
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, when he first came in.
That the first time, last time?
We did sit at the table, I said I wanted to be involved with economic development, the finance committee. Um, I asked if we can with the golf course, and I gave you one more public safety committee, but apparently we don't have that committee no more. So I gave you four, but I haven't struck, I haven't struck gold yet.
No, but, but since then, have we had a communication? Because I haven't denied you guys anything. I need you guys to work, and it's all good. So you can talk, we can say whichever one you wanna sit down, we can have a conversation. All this showboating and, and, and the idiocy out there make our community look bad with all the huffing and puffing.
I was, I was mad.
Point of order, trustee, please, thank you so much.
I-
So there's a motion and a second.
I wanted to be recognized, because when Mr. Robinson did come in the room that evening, he did not mention anyone's name. He just expressed that he was upset, that something needed to be done. He was not happy about a meeting or whatever the reason was, but I don't recall him ever airing out anyone's name. And if we're gonna talk about people airing out someone, the way they did that man over there in the corner, John Payton, that was ridiculous. So when people wanna talk about airing out, think about the way people came up here and all but called him a thief and a crook. That, excuse me? Uh, did they prove that he had used insurance? But I'm saying, did they prove it? As far as I know, they haven't. So for people to come up there and lambaste to him and call him everything but a child of God, that was airing someone out. It was very disrespectful the way they treated him. Now, that was something for executive session that should not have been allowed in a public hearing. It should not have taken place in this boardroom. When we talk about people from the clerks to whoever, we do it in closed session. It is not to be aired out like that. It was a disgrace and the decorum was not there. So when we talk about airing out, let's keep that in mind and let's not let that ever happen again. Case closed.
All, all right, trustee, thank you. There's a motion and a second, and this is, uh, supporting the efforts of trustee Sonia Jenkins to trustee liaison.
And I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just had a question to trustee Jenkins. Is this the, the committee that you wanted to be the liaison, liaison over?
All right. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay, trustee Lewis?
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams?
Vote aye.
Trustee Jenkins? Trustee Foucher?
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson? Trustee Brooks?
Vote aye.
And Mayor Rudes?
I can, vote aye.
Thank you. The motion has passed.
All right. All right, the last item on the agenda will be item F two G. You know what, I'm just gonna say this off the record. We always, we get here and we make ourselves look very, really stupid by not doing the function of govern- doing the functions of government. So let, 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 Mayor.
Mayor.
We, we make ourselves look really stupid to, to the public out there when we're constantly trying to bring in new industry and business. This is a business meeting where the trustees' only obligation to the residents is to pass and support legislation, policy, and ordinance. Not to create these small groups, not to create programs, not create efforts and things like that. Sometimes I think that the general public is misled on what the actual obligation is of a trustee. The trustees are only supposed to do pass legislation, go back and review old and past ordinance that been on our books since the seventies. Those are the things that they are elected to do. Not create programs, not to say mom and pop stores. It's time that we shape our government up and have the right effect on our community, because we look like a bunch of damn fools out here. And I'm just gonna call it straight like it is. We got, we, we got people sitting out here talking about programs and entertaining things, but no one's talking about policy. No one's talking about our infrastructure. No one's talking about roads. No one's talking about building our tax base. No one's talking about annexations. This is what you're elected for, not to talk about the children and playing on everybody's heart like we don't give a doggone care about them. And we all do. Enough of this nonsense, it's enough. We work extremely hard to promote the best of this doggone community. And it makes us look really stupid when we talk about, oh, we need this programs and I haven't done this and committees and commissions. Pass a damn law. Pass the ordinance about the nineteen seventy-three ordinances we got, the nineteen sixty-five books that we working on. That's what we need to do. We working in a, in a Jackson generation with Flintstone mentality. This is not everything about personal. This is about the business of the people. And if you don't wanna do the business of the people, then I don't know what to say. But as the mayor, I'm gonna do exactly what I'm supposed to do. Project this village to the next generation, prepare the seat for the next generation to come forward to. Because I like infrastructure. I like LED lighting. I like passing legislation. There's only one trustee, two trustees that talked about, Mayor, let me look at these ordinance we operating on since nineteen eighty-three, since nineteen seventy-seven. Why our ordinance not codified on the website? Why we can't get our document stuff? So while they laugh and joke, sometimes you mislead the people, and people, don't be misled. This is what we elected for, policymakers, not micro managers, not popping in on people saying, I wanna have this meeting. Because if that's the case, you really need to take a real good look at what your government is. Cause we're not operating in a managerial form of government. Everybody's acting in their own silos. So I'm gonna get this referendum, and maybe we need to look at precincts and wards, because then you can know what the trustees are doing. You can know where the adequate street lighting and the projects are going.
Point of order, Mayor.
You laugh and talk, Mrs. Morgan, leave the mil- leave the building.
Point of order, Mayor.
Leave the building, cause the hollering is not gonna be tolerated.
Point of, point of order, Mayor, I'm lost, where, where are we supposed to be on the agenda?
Yeah, we about to get there, we going back.
Cause you turning red, point of order.
It, 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 it just doesn't make sense. This not the Covington administration, we not going backwards.
Bills payable, Mayor, bills payable, bills payable, bills payable.
I served on it for two.
Right. Bills payable, bills payable.
So with that being said, we're gonna go to our bills payable. Attached for your- Hideous, hideous behavior.
Bills payable, bills payable.
And if they didn't put us against each other so much, we probably could do a whole lot of stuff together.
He probably say Dalton was more quiet last night.
Attached for your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the Villas University Park that occurred on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. General fund, four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one, fifty-five. Road and bridge, thirty-eight thousand, seven fifty-nine, fifty-three. Town center fund, six thousand, seven twenty-five and six cent. University golf course, thirty-eight thousand, three seventy-two and twenty-four. Capital project fund, two twenty-five, seventy-one and eighty-nine cent. Tip seven, eight, a hundred and ten, with a payroll fund of four thousand, three thirty-four and ten, with a grand total of seven thirty-two, nine thirty-four and thirty-seven cents. Is there a motion to pay the bills? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So move.
Moved by Lewis?
Pay the bills.
There's a motion by trustee Lewis to pay the bills. Is there a second? Second by trustee Jenkins. Questions?
Yeah, hold on. Yes, yes.
Handful of people gonna run the village, ten doggone people.
What is the check number is, it's not here? You didn't put the check number, this one, where's the check? Is this the check number right here?
Yes. We bring our young, we bring our young people in, in here to see how democracy works, and you hear this outlandish hollering about, it's ridiculous.
Yes, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Okay, I need the check pulled for mentoring. I have a question, what is the gala table, twelfth anniversary gala for twelve hundred and fifty dollars? What is that? Madam? What is this?
Wait, let me, let me, let me, what was the question, trustee?
I'm trying, before I pull this check, I wanna know what this gala table is for the twelfth anniversary gala. It's a gala?
Okay.
At twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
If I can, Mayor, trustee Jenkins is referring to check number one-one-three-four-seven-six in the amount of twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
I need to know what that is.
So it's for mentoring youth through technology, which is a, um, of the STEM program for, um, for the youth. And so this is their, um, annual gala. And I wanted the, um, trustee to attend this gala, cause I wanna work with them to bring programs to University Park like this in other communities for our youth. Um, we, we have paid for plenty of gala tables and party tables. So, um, for the board to see the rest.
So, so board of trustees, would you all like to go? I'd love to attend.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins, you?
Yes.
Now, Williams, you? Everybody like to attend?
Okay, yes.
Well, let's go, I'll get a table, let's get the table then, if that, if that's what the case is, trustee. Yes, yes, manager Scott, please, please.
Okay.
Trustee Brooks, you attend? All right, we'll, we'll have a table together. That'd be great.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
Also, I'm looking at the University Park Youth Baseball Organization. Uh, it's a check for the amount of five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cent. And I'm concerned because the check date is for two-ten, twenty-twenty-three. And so we're in twenty-twenty-five and I'm trying to understand that. And also, they have submitted fiscal year May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We're in twenty-twenty-five in an amount of five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. And then I'm looking at this purchase receipt, um, for seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, it's check, check number six-six-five-five-eight-four-one-five. I need all of these pulled for further clarification because this is for four-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. So we're trying to understand, we're in twenty-twenty-five, why are we given seven thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five? These are questions that need to be addressed. I don't know if it's a typo. I'm looking at the checks.
So there were some, um, I guess because we didn't reimburse the baseball for previous years because they were going through their litigation from twenty-twenty-four, whatever. So that's why it's old. However, originally submitted, originally submitted were additional amounts, but that is a cashier's check that was for seven thousand something. And that came off of the, um, Dropbox. However, there, they can only get six thousand dollars reimbursement. But you're correct, that is for, um, for a cashier's check that they submitted to Crete Moni and it was for seven thousand some dollars. I don't remember the exact mon-
But I'm trying to under- I know that we do give six thousand dollars to our youth programs per year. And this is Crete Youth Baseball. I, I am not in support of Crete Youth Baseball, but University Park Baseball is what I will support.
Well, can I, can I make a comment? Can I, hold on, can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, trustee, so those are ones you wanna pull?
So, so, hold on. So for the baseball organization, that minus that seven thousand dollars, there was a total of receipts that totaled up to five thousand, two hundred and something dollars. During that time, the village manager stated that, we're in the board, stated that they would not do any reimbursements until the legis- the, um, the case that was out there was settled. So they said that we, that, cause I'm part of that baseball organization. And it was told that you would be able to submit your reimbursements after the finalization of the case. So, yeah, it might be the seven thousand, but there was also additional receipts that was submitted, as you can see, that totaled up to, I believe, was five thousand, two hundred and something, um, manager Scott. Which was, I'm saying minus this, minus this-
But it was retracted and I got this, uh, whatever it was. It was a money order made out to Crete.
Right, but this is, and that's why I believe when you reached out to the, um, president of the organization, you asked for additional receipts? And so additional receipts was submitted, which is part of, in the packet?
No, I actually didn't speak to him. He submitted them straight to Marlin or I never had conversation with him.
Well, I'm just saying that it was had conversations. So there was additional receipts that submitted for twenty-twenty-three, correct?
But then I got back, I needed up there, we didn't have that one, whatever that was, cashier's check, receipt, which all of you have, it says right there.
Ab- absolutely. But this is separate than the additional receipts that was submitted. So additional receipts that was submitted, and if it would total it up, it totaled up to over if you add this in. Because this is, this check, this cashier's to Crete Area Youth Baseball Organization covers uniform, registration, umpire fees. This covers everything what comes with the registration. It also covered, a part of this is also money that was provided because the baseball organization has sponsored, I believe, seven youth during that time period. So that was submitted, but additional receipts is in the packet that shows, that counts up to during the twenty-twenty-three time.
There actually was a customer receipt where someone had actually wiped it out or removed the original person's name.
For what?
A receipt for reimbursement, and I have that as well.
So which, which receipt?
Uh, I have to go back through it, but actually someone, you can actually see where someone wiped it out.
No.
And it was submitted. I actually do have a copy.
No.
Excuse me?
So if that's something that you're stating that, okay, if you had questions on that receipt, then you should have submitted the rest of them. If that was one of your questions and then you could have reached out to the organization.
It doesn't matter because the maximum amount is six thousand. So even if it totals nine thousand, they're only getting six thousand.
Which I, I understand. I'm just stating that additional receipts was submitted. That even with minus the seven thousand, additional receipts was submitted.
It did not total six thousand. If you omit that. Also, I will never accept a receipt where it, where the recipient's name is wiped it out. And I can show that to you tomorrow.
If you wanna show that, that's fine. The recipient's name, that I, from my understanding, was not, uh, wiped it out. But if that's something, then I can say maybe that one, but it should be, uh, an adjustment made to that check. Because the organization has provided, provided receipts, which I know, they provided receipts, so there should be a reimbursement. And the, the holdoff was because of waiting for the-
I will forward that to the entire board tomorrow where it hasn't wiped it out.
I just stated that if you feel that that particular receipt was wiped it out, then that one should have been removed. And then the rest of the receipts that was submitted should have been a part of the reimbursement.
And it was removed. And it's still that total seven thousand some dollars. That, that one money order, I have, you have it right in front of you.
If there's additional bills, receipts that was submitted. So I'm, I'm confused on where y'all stating that there wasn't additional receipts. Even if this cashier's check, which I just stated, covers uniforms, registration, it covers umpire fees, it covers renting of the fields, it covers a lot of different things. That was one of them. But I, I, I know it was probably around ten or eleven additional, maybe ten additional receipts.
No, but I'll go over that tomorrow.
You didn't, you didn't receive ten additional receipts because it's in bills payable. I just, it-
Can we pull this for now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know it's max. I know the max is six thousand. I'm just stating, that's why they said for the amount of five thousand, two hundred. So whatever was pulled, it could be reviewed, but I'm just stating that if it's wait, they waited all this time for the reimbursement and then now you all are coming up with some issues with it. That's something that should have been relayed to them and it, it was not. And then whatever little receipt that you said that assumed to be wiped it out, then that should have been taken out and then the rest of them should have been put in for the reimbursement. And then that one should have been reached out to the organization to say, could you provide me with the actual receipt of this to, in order to get the additional? It's just, just saying that you're gonna pull everything. I just don't understand that all of the issues that come up when all of the other organizations come and get their reimbursement, they don't even have to provide as much. And it's the, the back and forth with this situation. So if that's the thing, it could be discussed, then that's fine. But if you wanted to see the receipts, I will let the president know that he can submit those receipts. I know, but I'm stating that after, since the board member has pulled it, that doesn't mean that it's over with. That means that there's discussion to go back to the organization to say, here's the reason why and I need additional information. That's what I'm stating, that you need to reach out. The, since I'm hearing this, I will let the president know to reach out in regards to what was submitted.
All right, thank you.
May I ask a question? How many children play with the University Park Baseball Organization? How many children are playing, uh, with, that we have to purchase uniforms for? And whatever else you, you know, you guys have to do. How many children are on this team from University Park?
Trustee Jenkins, um, my response to that is when organizations come in to submit their receipts, they submit their receipts and that's it. They do not have to give a breakdown of every single thing that is done. They do not break down how many uniforms was purchased. They don't break down how many kids was in the organization. Again, when it comes to separate treatment, this is what's happening because none of the other ones have to come in and actually be here to even say, this is what this is all for. How many kids was on the bus that you took the bus to? None of those questions ever come up.
My question-
So for the reimbursement, the reimbursement is states that the organization can submit their receipts for reimbursement up to six thousand dollars. That's it.
Now, I want to-
It doesn't go into how many, what else is that?
Okay, I'll respect that.
Any other questions for the baseball organization, you could reach out to that board and they'll be able to ask, answer those questions. I'm just stating, my comments is based off of the receipts that I know was submitted. I just looked at, I've looked at bills payable, they're in there. So for, for, all of a sudden, now there's no receipts. I'm confused on where's there not receipts.
Well, I'm questioning this because, uh, for the best interest of the taxpayers, I want to know, um, are we paying for, are you asking for the six thousand for the year of twenty-twenty-three? That, is it the year of twenty-twenty-three?
It's the year twenty-twenty-three because we, as at, at that time, the board said, because until the, the board, the baseball organizations, legal situation was completed, they would not submit any reimbursements. And then after that was completed, then they would be able to submit reimbursements for that year.
For the year of twenty-twenty-three?
Correct, because nothing was received in twenty-twenty-three nor twenty-twenty-four.
And then this is also for twenty-twenty-four as well?
No, this is for twenty-twenty-three.
Just for twenty-twenty-three? But not, you don't want anything for twenty-twenty-four?
We will submit something for twenty-twenty-four.
And my question now is why? Because you did not utilize the fields, the children did not play in University Park. And I know that to be true. And so my question is, is this, and I, and none of this is personal, please, please hear me out. This is about the children here in University Park. And this is about the taxpayers that are paying for these children to go to these programs. And if we are not utilizing our fields and we're not using the things that our, our people have paid for, why should we reimburse and we're not having our children utilize the fields that are here in University Park? That's, that's the question. And so I have noticed, which is a good thing, because I was a part of the beginning of the University Park Baseball Organization. We started it here in University Park. It was founded in University Park and we wanted it to stay here. And now it's more so leaning toward Crete. Now, and, and, and please let me be clear. Crete would not support us the way that we're supporting them. Moni is not gonna support us the way we're supporting them. I don't have a problem with supporting children, but I wanted to make sure that everything continues based here in University Park where it started. And if we're funding it, it needs to be located here. The children need to play here. They need to utilize the fields here. We need to make sure that that six thousand dollars is going toward the prep of our fields and not the prep of Crete's fields. That's where I'm going with this. Also, I'm looking at this and it says trucking, a trucking company. I don't know what this trucking is, one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. I don't know what, it says two twenty-yard FBS baseball. My, I, we don't understand this. Why should the taxpayers have to pay for things that are not going on in our community? That's what my major's concern is with this organization. That's it. That, and I'm through and I think that they need to, the check needs to be pulled to further clarification. We received all of the invoices that we need so we can go on and give you guys the money that you deserve.
As for the response, the children in University Park do play and practice and are in University Park. Again, the criteria for the reimbursement is for the organization to submit their receipts. And that's exactly what they did. All these other specific questions, as in all the, at how many here, how many there, where do they play, what do you do? That is something you can ask the baseball organization. When here with University Park, the criteria is submit your, any organization, submit your receipts. And just like all the other organizations, which is the, uh, the Lions, um, the, 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 um, the track, they submit their receipts and that is it. They don't have, they don't go through the questions or anything. It's not about what you do. Even like when I submitted the receipts, I know one of the receipts is for insurance. Another receipt is for, uh, awards that we provided for the kids. So we don't have to break down because that's not the criteria. The criteria is submit the receipts and that's exactly what the organization did. That's exactly what the other organizations do and we have no problem with it. It's supporting the kids. I know, as of right now, I know my kid has actually had a game today. And I know Mr. Ellis' grandson is one of them that plays and practices and he's had a game today as well. So as in supporting our kids in University Park, that's exactly what we do. And as for why fields are not being used, that is other stuff that needs to be addressed with the board. But there's reasons that if you wanna have questions about that, then reach out to the baseball organization. They can give you that information. Okay.
Can I just say, I didn't know, I didn't know, excuse me? I mean, someone makes an outburst because I'm getting ready to add something. I think that's rude and disrespectful. I don't deserve that, especially when I stood there for how many years? Come on now, let's not, let's not get it started because I'll get it cracking. Uh, yes, I, I can take a licking and I'll keep ticking. Don't, don't get me going because you know I'll go there. And when I get done, everybody gonna wanna leave the room because I won't leave nothing unturned. Excuse me? Okay, as I was saying, trustee Foucher, I understand, you know, what you're trying to do. I didn't know that they were playing here because I would have been going to some of the games that were here opposed to Crete. So I'll have to check with my-
They're not playing, they're not, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. They're not, they haven't had any games here, they practice here, but that's because of other reasons that the organization can, can let you all know, but there's a reason why they're, they're not.
Okay, I mean, I've, I've heard it before and I think all of y'all were aware of it when we were on the community Zoom, but it was all hush, 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 swept under the rug and so on and so forth. And I found out at later date. That's why before, when I said the baseball organizations here, University Park, has always had problems and I stand on that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have it here. I just know past, present, and I hope in our future that we'll continue to have that. I hope that one day we can bring it back to University Park and they can play the teams and stuff like Richmond Park, Park Forest, the teams that they were-
Exactly what the org- just speaking on the organization is wants to do and that's the plan. They went out to do some advertise, I'm just speaking on their behalf. They went out to do advertise and put out signs, try to get enrollment. Unfortunately, the enrollment is down because of the amount, the morale that happened over the past couple of years. So because the enrollment is down, we have to make sure that we can actually have more kids here in order to play in University Park. If you don't have, if you don't have a lot of enrollment, then that causes the problem and there is other issues that inconsistent of that. So, yes, I understand and we want the kids to continue to be here, which that is the goal. But I can say over the past three years, the baseball organization has been running just fine. They hasn't had any issues. We're working fine with all of our surrounding communities as, as well as being on the, the, the collaboration with Crete Moni and University Park. We have not had any issues over the past three years. So, things are going in the right direction.
I misunderstood, it sounded like you said they played here too.
I might have accidentally said that, but no, they do not, they have not played here this year. They played last year. There was games that was played last year, but not- They played last year, there was games that was played last year, but not this year.
Okay, thank you.
So the goal is to bring it back to University Park?
The goal is, is still here, is still here. The goal is to continue on with it, but it's the push to make sure that, I mean, unfortunately, we had people that was telling them not to register in University Park. So because of that, they did not. And so now we have to bring those kids back aggressively to try to find a way to bring them back to be a part of University Park Baseball, then they, then we can be utilizing the fields.
Alright, 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 listen. We don't bills payable.
We just, right, we don't bills payable, we just wanna pull and investigate the checks. You wanna investigate the checks, right? So we gonna pull to investigate.
Alright, it, the, the checks, the checks have been pulled, anything else?
It's just that one check.
Oh, okay, public comments section is over.
I had, I had questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you have other questions on other bills? Anybody? I didn't know somebody was talking. I, I do have questions on some bills. Anybody? Okay, so for the Aqua bill, I mean, for the Aqua bill, I can't remember which number it is. But it was for the Regal Farm, this was back in twenty fifteen? What, what was happening? Because I do, I thought that the water was cut off over there or something happened. Why are we, why are we just getting it? Is it because they, you turn on the water and that's what's happening? Why is it all the way back from twenty fifteen?
So recently, um, in doing the second half of the renovations, they needed to access water. Um, when they contacted, I think it was Chris Vargas contacted Aqua, they said, "We had a delinquent bill from whoever was previously handling finances and the bills weren't paid."
I'm surprised they, they didn't give us that information ahead of time. They just, it just all of a sudden just came up, it's like.
I'm sure somebody probably did receive the information, but I wasn't here at that time.
No, I'm saying, um, as of now, you know, we've been paying Aqua bills all this time. I'm stating that they didn't see this in the system, that this was a delinquent bill. I don't know what, what caused it to come up, that's all.
Because we attempted to turn the water on and they said we had a bill. And I wasn't here all those years prior, so I don't know who was receiving the delinquent notices, but those are separate accounts. So that, they're not gonna send us a notice about that when it's been disconnected. They send us bills for current bills that are delinquent. So I don't know when the bills stopped or whatever happened, why it wasn't paid. I was not here, so I can't answer to that. I'm just, we need to pay it now so we can get the water turned back on.
Okay, and then is another one for Antero Group? Oh, and the invoice is states project name Village of University Park On Call. What is that project, what is that?
We can pull that if you'd like.
Yeah, let's pull that.
Yep.
Okay, um, and then?
What check number is that?
Um, um, it was the one for nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So typically On Call Services is when, you know, they do emails, they come out, whatever type of work that they're doing under On Call Services, but uh, we can pull that.
Yeah, I would say pull that one. And then the, if that's fine. And then the, I'm sorry, did you find that check number, Marlenra?
No.
It's, um, so it's Antero Group, let me see if I can find it real fast. Yeah, it's one for nine, and then it's another one I had a question on. It says for the University Parkway Side Path, what is that project?
So we applied for um a grant for the side path construction. It was a climate justice grant that was about seventeen million and some change. Um, but we did get a letter from the Trump administration telling us that they are not supporting any climate justice initiative grants. It was a federal grant, so it was scrapped. But we are gonna apply for other grants and utilize that. But when they have to go out and give me scopes for measurements, design engineering, all that for grants, so that's what that encompasses. But I, I always repurpose those type of grants if I can find something that's a state grant, like the SEDRA grant, which we got, or recently got for a, a little over a quarter of a million dollars.
So this, um, so this University Parkway Side Path is not going on anymore?
No, it is, we just have to find other avenues to help fund it. Because we do have a portion for the village, a village portion, but I do like to go for grants because it does cut down on our expenses. We don't wanna use all of our available funding for infrastructure, it's just not smart.
Where, where is the side path, I'm not sure where?
The side path that wasn't completed and we actually, when I got here, there was a, it was from the previous administration, Robinson Engineering was working on it, I don't know, but it's evident, you can see it stops there. So that is that side path. And that's a side path that wasn't completed. We actually got hit with a, um, uh, some type of fee for IDOT, they were garnishing. Um, the grants that I was receiving, when I got here, was to the tune-up. I found out about one point five million and we have paid it down and satisfied that. But that was from twenty seventeen, I believe.
Okay, um, Marlenra, I believe that check number was, it's, it's a combination? So it's a combination of several things, but it's the one that's for nine thousand, but that check number is one, one, three, three, four, eight?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, and then another question for the Nadler Golf? The lease amount is higher than normal, what, right? Is, is that more?
No, that's, that's the general amount every month. And we also, so if they have to fix something, like if something's broken, a little thing, they'll charge us for that, but it's generally in the same amount. Sometimes they do have to come out and service the carts. We do have a lease agreement, but it's not, it's not a lot higher than normal.
I thought it was usually around seven thousand dollars for the lease amount. Now it's nine thousand three hundred and eighty-nine?
They had to fix some stuff, some of those carts, and that does happen.
So, and so when it says golf car lease agreement, that's including repairs?
If they have to do some additional repairs or there's problems and it's, you know, excessive, they'll, they'll charge us, yes.
Can that be separated from, so we know what type of charge, I don't know?
I can ask.
Okay, thanks. Because it's just make it seem like that the lease amount is, has increased versus, and that's what the title states, the lease agreement.
But I also know that, look, in reviewing the agreements over the years, they did increase over the years. And that's just, uh, you know, it's the standard agreement that always goes into, um, goes into effect every year. But I'll pull it and I'll get, I'll provide you with that, I'll provide the entire board with that information.
Yeah, because I, yeah, I kind of remember it's usually around seven thousand and something every month, so it's nine thousand. And then, that is the only questions that I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Yes, that's for the renovation of Regal Farm. As you know, there was a grant that was prior to me getting here. Um, we applied for additional funding, the original amount that was applied for prior to me getting here with Ms. E was about six hundred and some thousand. We've applied for several hundred thousand in addition. Um, I think two hundred thousand, if I'm correct, was taken. I'll pull it up, but we received over six, but I'll pull all of the stuff. But that was, remember, they're separate grants. And we had, I believe it was two hundred thousand, I have to recall from a year ago, that was pulled by IDOT to satisfy that one point five. So the village had to cover that because they would not give us that two hundred thousand back. And I have receipt of that. They took it from that twenty seventeen project and they told us they do not have to satisfy that because they took it, it's the state, so they'll take it by any means necessary.
That's the part we have to cover?
Roll call to pay the bills, Madam Clerk. With the exception of the checks that the board members have requested to, be removed. Roll call, please.
Yes, trustee Lewis.
Vote side.
Trustee Williams.
Vote side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Vote side.
Trustee Foltcher.
Abstain.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote side.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudez.
Vote side to pay the bills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we've got one more general public comment and I think we're gonna get out of here tonight.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me just fine? Good. My name is Ayman Nickerson, I'm, um, I grew up here from University Park. Um, my foundation, the Nickerson Family Legacy Foundation, for the last three years has been giving out scholarships specifically to youth who are, uh, live in University Park, attend Cremoni High School, um, as graduates. And, um, year to date, we have given twenty-two scholarships out to University Park residents, young people, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars we've given out to young people. As, uh, trustee Williams just stated, uh, this past Tuesday, uh, the Crete-Monia High School has been so pleasant to us to allow us to use their facility to host our, uh, award ceremony for these young people. And she was so gracious to attend, the mayor's office, uh, attended, uh, Mr. Rude, uh, Mayor Rudez wasn't, uh, personally there, but his, his office, uh, was there in his stead. So we appreciate you all and you all's support of just, uh, you know, showing up for these young people as well. Um, one of the young people, he's actually here today, he had his, uh, senior night for his, uh, was it baseball? Since we were talking about baseball, I don't know if he's baseball or what? Y'all, y'all was talking about baseball or volleyball, okay. Volleyball, uh, I was thinking baseball, because we were talking about baseball, I'm sorry. Volleyball, um, but he wasn't there, so I wanted to, my, my objective of this evening was to award him his scholarship in front of his community to celebrate this young man. Um, Martice Crawford, would you mind coming up here? Here you go, young man. And, um, just, you know, what we do is just kind of speak a little bit about these young people because the process is they submit a, uh, essay and then, um, I meet them in person. They have an in-person interview. And his essay was very, very compelling, um, for him to speak about him. I call him the comeback kid of just a young man that was able to just change his directory of, uh, the direction he was going, just solely by making the decision to do so. And, um, I was telling him about his superpower, um, of his mind, like his, he has the ability to see something and then make it happen. And, um, that's gonna take him a, a long way. So I just wanted to keep, you know, encourage him to keep doing what he's been doing and congratulate him. Um, and my foundation is awarding him twenty-five hundred dollars, so congratulations, young man.
Anything to say, young man?
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Good. And, uh, as trustee Williams, um, stated, two of these young people, um, normally our, our, our scholarship is renewable to them, but two of them, uh, my board just felt so compelled because of their stories and how amazing, um, they have been and their story again, and just meeting them in person. Uh, they're actually twins from University Park, live on Landau. And they're going to my alma mater. I graduated from the University of Illinois Chicago, uh, UIC. So, um, we, it's our pleasure that we, we're giving them a full ride to, uh, to college, you know? So, you know, this, this- I appreciate that. So this is just a passion of mine, you know, uh, as I stated, I'm from University Park. I go, I went to, at the time, it was Hickory Elementary, now Coretta Scott King. I graduated from Cremoni High School in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, I know all of Rudez, uh, Mayor Rudez's children, we grew up together. And I know all of Ms., uh, trustee Williams' children, we grew up together as well. But, uh, this is just a, a passion of mine to just, uh, pointing into my community. Uh, I appreciate where I came from. Um, it has propelled me in life to be able to be here in this moment, in my era of life of, uh, philanthropy to give back to my community. Um, as I stated, I graduated from UIC as well, so this is just the, the, a, a really great time of my life to be able to point to people who look like me from my neighborhood, who attended my, my high school and then even my cousin, "You going to UIC too, right?" Look, he going to UIC too, right? So how cool is that, you know? Um, but as trustee Williams was stating as well, uh, we had an opportunity to talk along with the mayor of just other programming that I have in store, uh, for my, for my neighborhood and my community as well, of, uh, teaching financial literacy. Absolutely, yeah, to, to our youth as well as, uh, um, our health issues that we have in our community as well. So we have, uh, some amazing programs that we wanna bring to University Park. And, uh, I know some of you all, but not all, but I look forward to meeting you all in the very near future. And, uh, once again, thank you for your time and your support, thank you.
Alright. So that should conclude our meeting. If I'm not mistaken, everyone's report will be posted on the, um, village website.
Well, I'd like to motion to go into executive session.
Let me finish, let me finish. So if there, anybody who doesn't have a report being read out loud, please give it to Ms. Jenkins. She'll post it on the website and we can move on from that. So I've also got a request to go into executive session. I'm not, okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Wait a minute. You spoke already.
I will, uh, he was, he was trying to catch him.
Okay, alright, Ms., alright, Ms. Debbie, I got you. You're quite welcome.
I'm gonna try to do it right.
Alright.
First off, thank you to whoever chose to separate the agenda signing sheets.
Yeah.
That gives a lot of confusion.
It does.
To me, it does. As long as my name is covered there on both sheets, even more so. And thank you to Public Works. I witnessed Public Works Friday, take care of the outside.
I am so sorry. Kudos to Public Works. I was watching them Friday. I was watching them as they were taking care of outside, the front of the town center. And, uh, it looks beautiful. Um, I am so s- I am so sorry I could not attend the, uh, Veterans Committee, um, program, but I have been told it was very nice. So that's something that is a plus for this community. Please, everybody, rather than when you have a disagreement, can you please speak loud? This way, when the board meeting is played on YouTube, we might be able to hear it. Since I've been told about the acoustics in the same building that we were in last year, back when you could hear the meetings, um, perhaps if everyone, like I was reminded, speaking to the mic, if you could raise your voices a bit, that might help with the sound when you're trying to view it on YouTube. Um, manager Scott, can you give me a grass cutting status when that will begin?
So we do have a choir, we're fundraising it, I hope they have it tonight, but we'll have it out tomorrow.
May I also suggest, those of us that needed the service of the snow removal, can you just transfer all of our names on that same list? Because if we couldn't shovel the snow, we sure not gonna be able, I'm not gonna cut my grass. And I got comments about it this month, okay? But last but not least, this young man, he deserves another round of applause. I say that foremost because what he sat through and witnessed at this meeting tonight is not the proper decorum. It is not the proper decorum. I don't care if it's coming from the board, I don't care if it's coming from the audience, it is not proper decorum. As long as I've been out here, I will continue to attempt to respect any and everybody. May you be on the board, may you be in the audience, may you be viewing. Let us all work on a word called respect. We don't have to like each other, we don't have to believe in each other, we don't have to agree with each other, but we are supposed to respect each other. And congratulations to you again, young man, because you sat through all of that for us to- for us to finally hear what you have exercised in your life. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Pardon me, ma'am?
I said I didn't know to sign on two, but I just wanted to thank the police department, uh, last evening. The fireworks was unbelievable, and the shooting by my window, it was scary. But I thank God that you guys came out, they were quick, they were immediate, and I think they need kudos, and they need an applaud for what they did last night, because it was terrible. Those fireworks were horrible and scary, but thank you for coming out right away, I just wanted to thank you.
Thank, thank you, all right, we're, we're planning on- So is there a resolution? So, so, also- Okay, one, one second, also, we wanna also recognize Public Works Department, because this is National Public Weeks, Public Works Week. So we need to acknowledge the people who actually take all the brunt about how the village doesn't look, so now is the time to acknowledge them in a positive way, and encourage them to build and get stronger and better in our community. So Chris, you and your crew, former Public Works guy, myself, congratulations, happy Public Works Weeks, and continue to work, and we're gonna try to continue to build your department up to provide the services for our residents, thank you so much. Ms. Taylor, come on, because I'm not gonna be doing this too often, but come on, Ms. Taylor.
Okay, I wanna come up here also to, um, just give kudos, it takes a lot to be able to, um, try to run a government, uh, and to be on a board, it takes a lot sometimes to even hear what residents have to say, and it takes a lot sometimes for residents to hear what you have to say. But one thing I learned in being in a classroom, especially with high school students, most of the time when there was the upheaval, it was because people didn't quite understand, and so when there's clarity, if you just take the time out to give clarity, and I, and answers when questions are asked, and give answers, it, uh, has a way of just diffusing all of that type of situation, and it's not as much upheaval. When people understand the process and how it's working, then you don't have all that, most of the time. You don't have all that. We cannot, and I will say cannot, we cannot come to adults and treat them like they're children, when something is said that would gaslight a situation, whether something is said, and mayor, I'm coming to you now, and I love you, but I'm coming to you, when you use words like idiot, things like that. I'm double-degreed, highly professional in biology, a lot of people don't know all these things. I have four endorsements, I'm not close to an idiot. When you have a person sitting next to you of a different persuasion than I am, and they giggle about it, yes, sir, you did, I watched it, it's definitely an insult to me and my culture, can't do it. So let's make some changes here, because we are moving forward regardless. We're gonna move forward in this village, I feel it, I know it's in us. But we cannot do it by coming at each other in an inappropriate manner, that's all I really wanted to say, thank you.
Greatly appreciated, Mrs. Taylor, thank you. Okay, so before we adjourn, we have this one more, last item of business. There seems to be a motion, trustee Foltcher is asking for an executive session. So she has a motion to recess, and to go into executive session, is there a second?
I gotta say the reason.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm saying, motion to go into executive session for disciplinary.
All right, is there, is there a second? Second by Thompson? I ain't for, but I mean, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Williams.
Vote no.
Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Foltcher.
Vote no.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote no.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudes.
Votes no for executive session, is there a motion for adjournment?
I just wanted to say, I mean, because you did skip the whole report thing, the other people. I just wanted to make a statement, uh, a comment, um, basically, I wanted to congratulate all the graduates of twenty twenty-five, um, and then just not the graduates, you all did an excellent job, it's just, um, and then just also the parents. Because I look at the parents, they actually put a lot of time and effort into your schooling, and so I wanted to, um, acknowledge them as well. Uh, one of the things I wanted to bring up is that my niece, her name is Zianne Foltcher, she was the valedict, valedictorian of Rich Township. So, I, I wanted to make sure that I recognize her, because it's just, it's so important that we do. I remember all the sacrifice, my brother was in the Air Force for fifteen years, and he was, he took custody of his daughter at six months old, and she traveled the world with him, but he made sure that she had the right schooling and the education. I remember him calling me when he was, um, on, on assignment at, at work, and that he'd be like, I ain't had nobody to keep my daughter, and he'd have her in his little duffel bag, sitting at his, his desk. Just the sacrifices that the parents actually go through to make sure that their children have good schooling, could be raised in the, the right way, that it really paid off as a reward, because not just a reward for her, but it's also a word for the, reward from the family to say, my child is the first person that's walking down, getting their diploma. So I just wanted to acknowledge my niece again, Zianne Foltcher with Rich Township, on her, um, being the valedictorian of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, trustee Foltcher. And before I ask for this motion for adjournment, I just wanna offer our condolences to our trustee Gina Williams, and I don't know if she wants me to do this or not, but in the loss of her brother, because we all have the opportunity to sit on that front row, so when we all grieve, when one grieves, we should all grieve. So I just wanna offer our condolences from myself and the board of trustees to you, trustee Williams.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it, it took a lot for me to be here tonight, but-
All right, we appreciate it.
I'm pushing through it.
All right, is there a motion for adjournment? Moved by Brooks. Seconded by, all, all in favor? Opposed, none, thank you, God bless, have a great evening.